I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, September 9th, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hulman, there are just a couple personnel items and one other item in the table file.
Yes, this evening we just have some appointments. We have increased and decreased in assignments, and we have a resignation. So that is your table file for this evening.
Okay, excellent, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second? Second by no. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. We ask that you come forward, and I'd like to remind the public that this isn't a listening opportunity for the board and not a time to debate an issue. Also, the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act prohibits comments about specific student matters even without naming the student in open session. This includes the public comment portion of our meeting. The board respects and values input on student matters, but if it relates to a specific student or a specific student matter, such input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or the school superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. So with that being said, if you obviously have stepped to the podium, identify yourself by stating your name and address, and if you represent a group, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. So, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Sarah Meritz. I am a professor of psychology and neuroscience at Carleton, and my address is 1708 Creek Lane. So, I'm here today to vocalize my support for later start times for Northfield middle and high schools. So let me start by reading two of the strategies laid out in the Northfield School District's strategic plan. So first, the climate says we will create and strengthen an environment that fosters mutual respect, responsibility, and rigor, and ensures the right to physical, emotional, and intellectual safety for every person. Second, with regard to stewardship, we will consistently demonstrate good stewardship by analyzing information, prioritizing needs, and managing our financial, physical, and human resources to support our mission. So I was really heartened to hear that the district considers good stewardship to include analyzing information because the data are clear. Later school start times significantly benefit students in many, many ways. Later start times lead to more sleep. For example, the later start time adopted in Minneapolis, beginning in the 1997-98 school year, led to nearly an hour more sleep on school nights. The same is true of studies conducted in Colorado, Wyoming, and throughout the United States. That later start times lead to more sleep is not terribly surprising, but increased sleep also positively affects key outcomes ranging from academic to health to teacher satisfaction. For example, academic outcomes such as improved grades, standardized test scores, fewer tardies, absences, and dropouts related to increased sleep may be comparable to the effects of decreasing class size by a third. Health-related benefits include reductions in depression and fewer car crashes, and teachers report better rested students make fewer mistakes, particularly in first-period classes. Notably, the American Association for Pediatrics recognizes the public health issue of chronic sleep loss in adolescents and recommends aiming for school start time of no earlier than 8:30 AM. Adolescents experience a shift in their biological clock that leads to a delay in sleep-wake cycles relative to children. Practically speaking, the average teenager has trouble falling asleep before 11:00 PM and waking before 8:00 AM, and yet, we require them to get up nearly two hours earlier than that. Sure, we all attended schools that started earlier than what I'm advocating for, but we know better now. We have strong research to say that starting school before 8:30 AM is detrimental to our children. We support protecting our kids' bodies with helmets and seat belts. Why not protect them with later school start times as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Would you like to as well?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jay Vemus. I'm also a neuroscientist and biologist at Santa Wolf College, and I live at 916 Pleasant View Court. And I just want to echo what my colleague, Dr. Meritz, has said. In my opinion, the single most important researcher on adolescent sleep has been Dr. Mary Karskeden. She showed, I think unequivocally, that adolescent physiology changes puberty with respect to sleep. Both the onset and melatonin, and sleep onset is delayed in teenagers. And we see as a population, activity behavioral data suggests that population, not just Dr. Karskeden's work, but many people's work, has shown that adolescents shift towards eveningness. There are some students that are genetically night owls already. They go to bed late. They are particularly detrimentally affected by early school starts. Some students are larks. They naturally get up very early, and perhaps early school time is not so bad for them, right? But this comes at a huge cost for the students that are at risk, genetically at risk, for the detrimental effects of early school starts. I think beyond the physiological data, the most important thing is really how does this change school outcomes? And I think the single best study comes from the United States Air Force Academy. The data are incredibly compelling, and although these are first-year college students and not high school students, I think the effect is likely to be larger in high school students smaller in college students. And I would add, I think air force cadets are likely to be biased towards an early-rising population. In the U.S. Air Force Academy, all the students take the same curriculum in their first year. Teachers teach the same syllabus. They give the same exams. They teach multiple sections, and so, and students are randomly assigned to courses. This is the ideal experimental setup. And what they found is students that had a class in their first period performed less well in that class than students who took the same course in the second period or later. And it's not just the first course where they saw this effect. It's across all of their classes. Students that had to start early just did less well. I think we can expect to see an improvement in the health and academic outcomes of Northfield students as we shift to a later schedule. Any change will be beneficial, and I think the later we can push it back, the larger the benefits are likely to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay. So, thank you for your comments. If we're seeing no one else come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hulman.
It's a rare evening that we have no announcements nor recognitions, so we'll move on with our agenda.
Excellent. So, up to, we will start with our items for discussion and report, and first on the agenda is Erin Bailey, our Community Services Director, who will present the Community Service School Improvement Plan. Welcome, Erin.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm excited to present the Community Services Division Site Improvement Plan. This first screen is just reminding you kind of the mission of the Community Services Division, and I think as you'll see throughout our site improvement plan goals from last year and what we are looking to work on this year, our real work of community services is to bring the community together and to serve places throughout, and to do that and serving places throughout the community. So as we get into our last year's site improvement goals, I just want to remind you what they were. They were to determine the appropriate space and programming needs for the Community Services Division programs, to work around the use of data, and especially determining what data the Community Services Division collects and what we do with it, and to review and evaluate the Community Services Division's internal operations. As we move forward to the next slide, which is the key reflections, I want to just point out the one way we gather data on incoming kindergarten students in regarding their experience prior to kindergarten is through a kindergarten, a pre-kindergarten experiences survey. So last year, the data I'm going to share with you tonight is about the students that are actually entering, that just entered first grade a week ago, but do want to reflect that data as we go forward. So I also want to give a big thank you to Hope, who is very instrumental in helping us collect this data and then also get it analyzed. So, this, what you're seeing this chart is the count of kindergarten students we had last, for last school year. When we do the initial push-out, which is we send it home within the enrollment packet for kindergarten, we had 73% complete the survey, or 180. And then, as you can see below, we had 27% that did not complete the survey. As you'll remember from a previous site improvement plan, we have entered into a data-sharing agreement with all of the preschools within Northfield. So when you see that did not complete survey, we picked up 18% or 45 students of having knowledge of where they were before kindergarten by being in those data-sharing agreements, which basically means they were showing up on rosters of other preschools even if the form wasn't filled out as part of the enrollment packet. So these data-sharing agreements have been proven to be hugely instrumental in helping us know where children are prior to entering kindergarten. So as part of the data-sharing agreement, then, Hope and I go on a little tour of preschools in the fall, and we provide back to them cohort-level data on their students' kindergarten readiness. And so that has actually been very, preschools are very excited to receive that data, and it's been a great conversation for all of us to have and a great time for us to have a touch point with those preschools. The data that we then also collect in these surveys is shared out with the entire pre-kindergarten staff. That means both within the district and throughout the community, the kindergarten staff both within the district and at Prairie Creek, and then elementary building administrators as well. So I share this survey because it will now help lead into some of our key reflections from this last year. So as we look at some of our key reflections from last year, the first one is we're looking, again, one of the important things that we learned last year is the ways we expanded and recruited staff allowed us to reach a wider network and learn what really worked. The Community Service Division employs roughly 250 people, and that does not count all the contracted folks that we work with too. And so, we are always looking for the best way to recruit people and recruit the best people, and so really have been working hard with colleges and other groups in town to make that happen so that we can fill all vacant seats. Then, of course, the Community Service Division continues to serve a large number of students and families in need. And if you look at those graphs on the left, this is data that, again, was collected in reflection to our last year's incoming kindergarten class. So the top graph shows the pre-kindergarten free-and-reduced-price lunch institutional break ground. So what percentage of students that were enrolled in something, again, this is just the year before kindergarten and where they were located. So again, as you can see, Hand in Hand Preschool, which is obviously the district-run preschool through Community Services, is serving 35% of students on free-and-reduced-price lunch who are enrolled in something the year before kindergarten. And then the bottom graph shows where our Latino students are located. H-I-H is Hand in Hand. So as you can see, again, a large percentage of the Latino population is served by Hand in Hand Preschool too. As you also know, as one of our site improvement plan goals from last year, we did have the English learner preschool section. We were hoping to have six students in that last year. We did have 11 students enrolled, so just another way we are looking to continually do the outreach and serve students that may have some additional needs prior to entering kindergarten. We also found one of our key reflections was it was important to be part of the conversations at building projects as they began at the elementary schools. As all of you know, Community Services does have programming in all of these elementary schools, and especially kid ventures programming and community school programming who heavily use elementary buildings. So to be able to be part of those, either in the core planning groups or in those individual subgroups around a program area, was very beneficial to our programs. And then, of course, the partnership we have with the Stutor Education Group has provided some extremely valuable information. Community Services, just by the nature of the work that we do, had three different surveys that touched with our department, and that was the district department survey, the survey to staff, and the survey to parents. So all three of those provided some great feedback for us to work on in this upcoming So our site improvement plan goals for this coming year, again, two of them are carryovers as we wanted to either finish some of the work that we were doing on there or add a couple of new goals, or just where we are at in the building process might make it reflective to keep working. So first, again, is around use of data, again, determining what data the Community Service Division collects and what we do with this. And this ties into the district's strategic plan priority of building and fostering relationships. Second goal is to determine appropriate space and programming needs for Community Services programming, and this strategic plan priority is spaces that are modern, innovative, creative, and flexible. And of course, as we begin having conversations and the core group begins to meet with the Greenbelt Park Row model is certainly timely for the work of this year. And our last is around continuous improvement, and again, aligning to the Stutor Education Group best practices, and is a strategic plan priority of building and fostering relationships. So again, this, knowing that the Community Services Division Site Improvement Plan looks a little different than the school buildings, I did not touch on every strategy or assessment that we have in there, and you, of course, have the written document in front of you, but I did want to highlight a couple of the strategies that we are looking at going forward. First, we are going to continue to make the Hand in Hand Online Assessment more usable. And again, this is a thank you to Hope who helped us implement this as an online assessment. We use an assessment because we do receive Pathway 1 and 2 scholarship dollars. We are required to use an assessment that is approved by the Minnesota Department of Education. We have one that we have created and that was approved. It is quite lengthy, and so what we learned this year as we were having, with Hope's help of kind of making this online, is that the length of our assessment makes it a little unwieldy to have data in the timeliness that we're looking at. So we are looking to shorten. We will need to continue to do the full assessment as required by MD for our scholarship dollars, but be able to shorten to the essential learnings for what we do for the, kind of the short-cycle look at improvement for students. Then we will map the addresses of Community Services Program participants. This is a carryover from last year, one of those that we are going to get done this year that didn't get completed last year. And again, this was to review our gaps, if we have gaps of where people may live in the community that are accessing Community Services Program, to help us assess and understand our transportation needs, our needs of where we hold program classes, and if, again, who are we missing from the community that maybe is not represented in Community Services Programs. We'll then implement the facility use policy revisions, all of which you guys are very familiar with as we've had these conversations. Letters are going out yet this month to anyone that has used a district facility in the last year to let them know about the upcoming changes to the fee structure on July 1st, 2020, but again, to make sure and ensure that those are implemented appropriately. We will offer programming to new audiences and in new spaces. Our Adult Basic Education programming, the evening classes, are moving from the Northfield Community Resource Center to Greenbelt Park. They actually started there last week. It is a great partnership with our community school in that we will now be offering transportation for our Adult Basic Education students. They can access the bus through, that the community school provides. They can also access childcare in the evening. So we have many that are very excited to have this start, which will begin next week, those parts, the parts that are tied to the community school. The EL preschool section, we were moving to Longfellow. I will say, because this year, sorry, we are not, we didn't have enough students register for that section this year, but I think one of the great learnings we had last year as we met with parents from the EL preschool section, either conferences, or we also did two home visits through that program, they really saw Longfellow as their preschool center. So even though due to space, we offered it at the Northfield Community Resource Center, parents felt strongly that Longfellow was their child's school for preschool. So we were working hard to make that move happen this year, and had we had enough students, we certainly would have. The students that did indicate interest in the EL preschool, we did, we have enrolled in other sections of Hand in Hand that are held at Longfellow, and we have provided additional support in those classrooms to enhance what they would have had in their own section, so we are still able to provide those things. And then, at the Middle School Use Center, we had a need for additional classrooms to do some of our club activities and other breakout activities. We've seen a great increase in attendance there in the last couple of years, and so, again, a space need is just having access to more classrooms that are near kind of what is the home classroom of the Middle School Use Center, so that is also happening this year. We will also be reviewing and analyzing the auditorium technician position. This is a position that supports both internal and external needs within the district, and primarily those needs that are tied to our auditoriums at the middle school and high school. We're looking, just due to the number of needs and sometimes needs that happen on, multiple needs that happen on one night, looking at having multiple people that can support those roles, and a training program for high school students that are also interested in that work, kind of a mentoring training program to kind of build those people that are able to support our auditorium tech needs. And then lastly, implementing a system for positive feedback and communication with families on an individual basis. And as you likely saw in the written document, we are doing something, a strategy very similar to what Bridgewater talked about when they did their school improvement plan, and that would be at Early Ventures and Hand in Hand Preschool, sending postcards home to make sure, making sure that each child's family gets two postcards per year, in addition to the cot use and the CSaws that do currently happen on a very regular basis. And so with that, I would take any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, comments for me. Hold on.
So, my question is sort of previewing the next two reports, because I know that Dr. Hulman's going to be mentioning this under the challenges, and then Hope is going to be spending quite a bit of time on it with the asset data, is that thing about the gap and the achievement gap and the opportunity gap, and how the Community Services can be sort of a linchpin by providing that early learning. And I'm wondering if you can tell us a little bit more about maybe what your hopes are for learning something from the data. You mentioned that the assessment was sort of too lengthy to provide the informative data, or the, like, the Mother Goose curriculum piece, which is another piece that I know that you'd implemented. So maybe tell us a little bit about what you're learning.
So I think what we, what we know from the data, and Hope defined this, I think, so we know that there is a gap that exists before children enter kindergarten. We also know, and so the survey that we administered to families pre-conherited has a lot more than three slides that I showed you. So what we also know is that students in poverty have, do not attend preschool or childcare the same number of hours as families not living in poverty before entering kindergarten. So we know they come in with less experiences kind of outside of their home or outside of their family, friend, and neighbor network. We, we do get some feedback on that form as to why that might be, whether it is a cost, whether it is a language barrier, whether it is transportation. We also know that families are juggling lots of places to make this work. So we see families that are going to three different places in a week to make, whether it's childcare and preschool happen, whether, again, that's due to cost or transportation or where, what places are able to do. So I think as a Community Services Division and as a community, we see the need for a full-day program is large. The only full-day program we have here right now is Head Start. And so that is, if you need all-day care or you're a family that needs it, of course, for Community Services, we offer the wraparound care with Early Ventures, so we do have that. We're full at both Hand in Hand and Early Ventures, so, you know, there's a limit to what we're able to do. So at this point, you know, it's, we'll have moves in and out, but at this point, we don't have the ability to take any more students there. We also still have a need for places, slots that will take those that have financial needs. Does that have, is that answered?
Erin, could you just expand on that, just on the part about C-CAP and some of the, and how we are one of the few places in the community that do accept that, and how our space limitations have really been an issue? And why don't you also share a solution that will be coming in about 18 months or so?
So, Hand in Hand Preschool and Early Ventures, so Hand in Hand Preschool is unique in that it is the one site that has access to Pathway 1, Pathway 2 scholarship dollars, and then also our Own School Readiness Scholarship Dollars, which we can use more at our discretion for how we make choices for who needs to be scholarshiped. There are some families that would not qualify necessarily for the other two, whether it is an income limit issue, whether it is a documentation status issue. So we do have some funds to help support those families in need. So, there also is, to what Matt is alluding to, is CCAP, which is the Child Care Assistance Program through Rice County or through any county in the state. There was some significant new legislation that has been taking place and is ongoingly taking place. They've made some changes that are even going to be implemented as of September 30th. Because of these new legislations, many places chose to drop taking county assistance payments. They're pretty extensive, and they require FBI fingerprints and background checks for all staff prior to working with children. If you're an in-home childcare center, that also applies to anyone 13 and older in your household. It limits also then who is able to sub in and out of programs because, again, they would need to have that FBI fingerprint and background check. So many choices are just saying, many places are making the choice to say we're not, we just aren't going to do those additional legislative laws that are being implemented, and thus that means they are not taking C-CAP dollars. So it is further pushing families who have financial needs into a smaller number of slots that are available. And so again, you're looking at a very small number that are taking, you know, that have access to Pathway dollars and/or are taking C-CAP dollars to be able to support families that have any sort of financial need. And then you tie that with families that likely are needing to cover a full day of care, whether it's childcare or preschool or a combination. So in 18 or so months, actually, it's less than 18 or so months at this point, as we, as the core planning team is starting to meet for the remodel of Greenbelt Park, that is certainly, it gives us the ability to grow. It almost doubles the numbers, spaces we could potentially have access to for those two programs. Now, of course, we are also bringing Early Childhood Family Education, Adult Basic Education, and the general Community Services operation in there, but it does allow us to expand programming in those two areas.
That's a good question. I'll drop.
Thanks for the report. Do you have data on the Navigators Program and the impact that's had?
Yes. So one of the, in the written narrative, one of the use of, one of our goals around use of data is to continue to use the data that the Early Childhood Navigators are collecting. For those who aren't familiar, we house in the Community Services Department two Early Childhood Navigators. They are actually employees of Northfield Healthy Community Initiative, but work very much in partnership with the Community Services Division to serve families birth to five in gaining access to childcare, preschool, medical needs, food needs, transportation, any sorts of those things. They have worked with over 60-plus families now, most of which have ties then to Community Services in some way, shape, or form. But they've provided some great data around kind of where those families find gaps or what makes accessing different programs difficult, so that has certainly been very helpful. And then they've also, we've probably picked up 15 to 20 students that out of, that they've had connections to that we've then put into programming, whether that's not necessarily all Hand in Hands, we haven't had room for all those students, but we've connected them to some sort of preschool programming in the community.
Thank you.
Hey, you had a question.
Thank you for the report. I always love hearing your reports, and I know you do far more than is really encompassed in this report. And one of those things is, I really didn't notice a goal for the new building that you will be, the new old building that you're going to have. And I wonder if you had been thinking about that and whether you were, how you're going to get credit for it next year when you come back to report to us all the work that you've done.
Sure. So I think, one, due to the timeliness of when we move into the new building, and somewhat the logistics of just being in a new building. The first year, we are going to be in that new building and probably not do a large expansion in the first year. Again, to make sure that the system, you know, the systems of how we lay out the classrooms, how we bring in transportation, how we move the buses, how we do all of that, and the fact, we are going to be getting into this building right before school starts. And so the ability to set up even more kind of programming that we didn't already have in place will be really tough. We are going to need all hands on deck to start that first year and make sure we have everybody started up, ready to go. It's a large undertaking to move a licensed childcare center because we do need to have our licenser come out and the state fire marshal, they need to reapprove things before we then go back in. And so I think the level of things that need to be in place for the first year we go in is going is going to, not, I don't want to say limit, but cause us not to do a large expansion come next fall, with then the following year to be the year that we look to do those increases.
And that wasn't exactly what I was saying, but I'm happy to know that you're thinking years down the line. I'm thinking that there's just a lot of work going into preparing to move into the new buildings that you're going to be doing.
That is true.
And with the committee that you're going to be working with and all the details. And that's a big, that's going to be a big piece of your job in this next year. And I guess I would like to see it reflected somehow, so we can, we can give you credit for it next year and tell you, you did a great job.
Got it.
And then I just had another quick question. I, I was interested in your numbers of how many people looked through the community services brochure, and you seem to have a three-week time period, then you went back and said, oh, but we did it, you know, a couple of months later, we had three times as many. And I was wondering if you were thinking of sort of standardizing the time period after it's mailed, when you should be taking those measurements, and what, what that means, how, you know, how it...
Absolutely. A little of what you're seeing there, so we have a, had a new enrichment coordinator come on this year, and so what, what she was tracking is looking at different time periods. So the fact that you're not seeing three weeks and the other two really, that was a, a measure she wanted to include, and that was not kind of how our goal was written in the previous year, but I think wanted to, again, kind of reflect what is that, our impact in the initially, right, when the brochure comes out versus kind of over time. So that, I think, we, we are now tracking it, those page clicks, the views, the readers on a, on a more frequent basis. Is that what you're...
Yes, and I think this might even be an interesting topic, either for our community services board or, or maybe even this group. But just who, what pages are they even clicking on and where they're going and how, I would be interested in seeing how that's received and what people are looking at and when they're looking at it.
Great.
Excellent. Other questions? Tom?
I don't really have this formally to dwell. There was an article in the paper about some more immigration rules that limits who can get free lunches. I, I don't even remember it all, but you, you've heard of it.
You said public charge, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah. So we're aware of that, and we're providing answers and help and whatever.
Yes, that, I don't think that means the fear is not there. So I think, so, so Tom is referring to what is out there about public charge right now, which is the, there is, of what public documents or how, what families may access in public services that may make them ineligible for citizenship or other things down the road. Free reduced price lunch, or free reduced price lunch applications is not one of those items, but I think the fear that some are, documents are and some aren't has certainly caused a level of fear. What you're talking about has come out in the community school. We've had good conversation there about that, has come out as a fear there. We certainly work with families, but it's an understandable fear. I think when we talk about for preschool program, the ability that we have with our own school readiness dollars allows us to not, those are our own internal control of who we provide scholarships to, which allows us, we are not passing documents on to the state, they're not going through another clearinghouse. So we, if there is a family with a high level of fear, that is a choice we would make.
If I could just add, Tom, I know that that was a recent NPR piece that I think you're referring to, and to Erin and our department's credit because of our community partners, we had actually been having this discussion last fall, when the initial concept was brought out about this change in the public charge rules. And Erin and her team had an extensive discussion with Minnesota Department of Education, because you're hearing about the SNAP program, which is really the food stamp program that some people were confusing with the school, the National School Lunch Program. You have concerns about completing appropriate paperwork, and so Erin and her team really have the ear to the ground to make sure we know what the concerns are, and have built the relationships with our immigrant communities where there is trust for them to ask the question, which is something I'm incredibly proud of, because we are able to set the record straight and say, yes, this is what is the issue, this is what not is not the issue. And I had a chance, maybe three weeks ago, to attend an awesome program at the Northfield Public Library, where the Mexican consulate from St. Paul was in attendance, and their office gave an incredible presentation quite a bit around this as well, there were some questions. And so it is reassuring to know that we had an ear to the ground a year before this really started to get talked about in RS. And what I'm most proud of is the relationships that we developed with our immigrant communities where they are willing to share those concerns, and that we can clarify, you know, what might the issues be. So I think it's important, we have talked to some media outlets who have contacted us about what the concerns were here, and are working to make sure that we continue to clarify anything that is concerning to folks.
Other questions or comments?
I had two quick questions. One, from last year's report, you indicated you were piloting transportation for hand-in-hand. Where did that go and how was that, is that able to move forward, or what did you learn from that?
Yes, so we last, last year did provide transportation for all hand-in-hand students. The change that we made is historically, special, early childhood special education students receive transportation through Benjamin Bus, and hand-in-hand general education students receive transportation for Hiawatha, through Hiawatha Land Transit. In truth, I think we, we, Hiawatha Land Transit is not a bus route, and we have gotten large in the number of students that we provide transportation for. And so we are looking at sometimes busing routes of close to two hours. And I'm not sure that anyone is comfortable putting their three or four-year-old, for understandable reasons, on a bus route that might take that long. So last year, we did have every student that was eligible for transportation go through Benjamin Bus, which worked, which worked great. It does, and as we talk about going into the remodel of Greenville, this means a lot more buses coming to the school, which is, which is great, but it's something we needed to work through. I think, so we are implementing that same plan this year, those that all need transportation are to continue to do that. What we are interested in continuing to explore is how do we, and this is possible, but can we, to continue to work on whether four-year-olds can be placed on the, on the large school bus. That opens up our transportation options for those rural Northfield residents that currently are still a gap for us to be able to get to preschool in a timely manner. So we, that is what we're going to continue to explore, and we will continue to explore that as we look to our location.
Excellent. The other area that I know is, has been considered considerable work is working with our other local preschools to get them four-star parent-aware certified, so that they have access to Pathway One and Pathway Two scholarships. Have you been able to make any headway?
I think we're close on one. I think we are close to one this fall that will look to do it. So there is one, so Head, currently Head Start, Open Door Nursery School, and, and Hand-in-Hand currently take, are eligible for Pathway scholarships, and I'm hopeful we've got one more coming, so.
Okay. Great work. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Erin. I think you're, you're, all of your amazing work and your staff, it's, and good luck, the next year is going to be exciting and crazy at the same time, but yeah, a year from now. One other question, though, just logistically, I know with Greenville Elementary, we have a hard start, you know, but do you see that with those programs, it's able to be transitioned, or do you feel like, no, we got to be ready September, I think it's late this year, September 9th?
So our, our school year will also start that same day, and so we'll need to start to, the one that is probably most time-sensitive is early ventures, simply because parents are not, you know, we have to be closed. And I think it asks a lot, if we ask parents to take too many days off of work, so for us to move a childcare center. So that is probably, we certainly have a September 7th start date for kind of when hand-in-hand preschool starts. ECFE programming starts a little later. And early ventures would be probably the most, kind of, we want to move that fast and efficiently, just because that childcare center will stay open until we move, and it will open as soon as we can when we get in the next facility to come.
Thank you. Well, and I'm glad you highlighted the fact that literally you have been involved in all of the projects, you know, where everyone has been a little bit, able to be a little bit more focused on just theirs, you with the amount of programming that comes into all of our buildings. And Tom, so thank you for all that work and for the work we know is ahead. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. So our next item for discussion, we welcome Director of Assessment Services, Hope Langston, who is doing a update on the standardized testing. And her PowerPoint is in the packet along with the narrative, which is very helpful. Welcome, Hope.
Wasn't I just here? Feels like it.
I know.
You're always here.
We're always. Love it when you aren't here.
So I'm pleased to have the opportunity to update you tonight on the 2019 assessment results. Again, together, we're working towards our mission to deliver educational excellence, to empower all our learners to engage in our dynamic world. The primary focus of the presentation tonight will be two of these five ESSA indicators, and I'm not going to go through the goals that Minnesota has set, you can see those in your, in your packet, but they're pretty ambitious by 2025. But tonight, we're going to talk about academic achievement. So that's simply, are you meeting state standards or are you not in grades three through eight and 10 and 11? And the second one is academic progress. So as you might recall, the state changed how they're measuring progress under ESSA, and, and instead of the Z score, which we still get reported to us, they're looking at whether or not students actually move proficiency levels on the MCA. So there's four levels, do not meet, partially meets, meets and exceeds. And each student is literally awarded points on their movement, or whether or not they stay in the exceeds category, the meets category, they earn some points for that. So we're going to talk about those two items tonight. The other items will be covered under World's Best Workforce, so I'll see you in like a month or so. Okay, so 2019 MCA results. Really, when we're, when we're talking about our MCA results, we're talking about the academic health of our system and how our students are demonstrating their mastery of state standards for their grade level. And whether you feel strongly or not, one way or the other about the MCA, the reality is, as a public school district, our teachers teach the state standards, and this is the assessment to measure student knowledge of those state standards. So we, this year, wondered how those 11 snow days were going to impact our students in their, in their testing performance, because we, we call it the year of disruption. We're really happy that we had the flexible learning days in place, even though we didn't anticipate doing as many as we did, but I think it did help keep our students on track. So as, just as a indicator, the state proficiency rates fell in every grade level, as you saw in your narrative, except high school science and high school reading. Every other grade level, every other subject, the state rates fell. So we weren't immune to that. We didn't have as many grade level wins as we did last year, but we feel pretty good that we had some significant wins that we're going to share. And the, the other thing I want to say about the proficiency rates is, these are kids behind these test scores, and we know that on any given day, kids can encounter things in their life that may make it a great day to test or not such a great day to test. We don't have any student complete an MCA in one sitting. Well, I take that back. High school students do, it's best for them to do it that way. But our younger students do not take a test in one sitting. But we test about 2,100 kids, so any percentage point in movement is, is 21 kids, 21 little bodies behind that data point. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. So this is our overall reading proficiency rate, and you can see, you can see that we were relatively flat. The state, the state declined a little more than we did. We know that we had some, some areas that were, that were troubling for us. Fifth grade in particular saw drops in every building, but then we saw wins in third and fourth grade, but that was a little bit tough for us as a district. Fifth grade is already on it, attacking the, the issue and looking into how they can make some adjustments. I think it's incredible, actually, in year one of a reading adoption, that, that this is where we landed. So you combine reading adoption with the fact that we know from our flexible learning day analysis that middle schoolers in particular were, were disrupted by those learning days. I think this is incredible, given those two factors. So we'll take that and run with it. Math, you see a more significant decline. And what happened there was, fifth grade took a hit pretty significantly, where we saw drops in proficiency at Greenville, Sibley, and Bridgewater. And so overall, that, that led to this, this 2% decline. But if you look at the state decline, which is much more precipitous, and I know is drawing a lot of attention at MDE. And even within that, we're going to talk about some bright spots, but that's where we landed as a district in math. Science, again, we saw another drop. Remember, that's three grades, fifth, eighth, and 10th. And in fifth grade, that cohort that, that took a big hit in reading, also in math, and we saw a similar decline in fifth grade science. So there's a lot to look at here, and I just want to emphasize a couple of things. I, you know, I'm not Roger Jenny, I still, I think that that man was a genius, but I have learned a few things over the, over the last few years, and one of them is that never look at proficiency without some context. And so I, I really was waiting for the file to come out the last week of August, which is our media file, which allows us to look at how every other district and school in the state did. And what was fascinating to me this year is if you look at the column for this on the right, that is telling you the percentage of districts with proficiency rates below ours. And what was interesting this year is, even though we saw a decline in proficiency at certain grade levels, you, like, take eighth grade science, you actually saw an increase in the percentage of districts scoring below us, which tells me, yes, the state struggled as a whole. Districts all over the state were struggling to keep their proficiency up in this year of crazy weather. So I'm really impressed, again, with how we performed. We know fifth grade is an area of need, and, and as I said, that team has been already meeting and, and looking at ways to really tighten up some things and align with standards more closely. So the two red areas of math and science in fifth grade, we did actually fall below the state average as a district. I don't anticipate staying there with the great work that that team is doing, but the rest of the, the percentages over on the right are pretty impressive. And I also want to point out that even just a slight change, a slight positive change in proficiency can be, bring huge gains in the state context, because there's so many districts clustered in those middle ranges. There, there's not a lot of districts, you know, where there's 99% of their kids are proficient, it's just not happening. So I think the two together provide a much more complete picture about our overall performance. So some notable wins for us. I know that you've all heard about Move Five, and, and it's just been tremendous to watch that increase. You know, we, for five years, my first five years in the district, where we were seeing those incremental declines every year, and then we hit the end of year five, and we're down 9%, 10% in reading proficiency. So to turn that around in two years with this focus, and really collaborative effort between Northfield Promise, all of the teams, the third grade teams from between Northfield Promise, all of the teams, the third grade teams from each school, the principals, Mary's great work on reading curriculum, has really led to a significant increase in two years. And I anticipate that that's going to continue. The plan is, this year, that we're expanding this Move 5 to K2, with Northfield Promise funding the initiatives in those grade levels. And I see the third grade team is committed, and I think what's exciting is the sharing of both data and instructional strategies that are working is becoming sort of the norm. And I think that's just tremendous. So that's a huge win, and you have seen it play out in that third grade proficiency level. Grade eight continues to be a grade level that is seeing good success. This year, the eighth grade English team, Jane Wyland and Ann Jurety, they were seeing that their results were relatively flat, and they wanted to realign some of their instruction. So they did so, and I will say, it's always nice to let them see that win in the number of kids meeting grade level standards, and they did see that. The other win for eighth grade continues to be math. And while they had a slight decline this year, as did every grade level in the middle school for math, what we saw there was, for the 55% of those kids exceeded, exceeded on the eighth grade math test, which is the highest level we've ever had. What that was, was this cohort that was in eighth grade last year, and it's current ninth graders, was the first cohort to benefit from the expansion of that accelerated track to be able to take algebra in seventh grade. So those kids, instead of just being one section, we had a whole additional section of kids who were that motivated to complete all of the pathways in sixth grade and in Imagine Math that allowed them to accelerate in content, and then join the algebra class in seventh grade. So we think that's a huge win for all of those kids, and it's going to be interesting. There's a great interest to study how they progress through the high school, but 55% of our kids exceeding in eighth grade is just tremendous. So that was a win for them. Grade six, we had a great experiment, as you recall, going on in sixth grade in the first year of Reading Plus, where we had half sixth graders using Reading Plus, half were not. And then we looked at the results, and the whole team looked at the results. So this past year, all of the kids were doing Reading Plus as a supplement to their core instruction. So we get asked that a lot, especially in Northfield Ford, do we replicate what works? And how do we do that? And this was a case where we did replicate what works, and we saw it work for the whole sixth grade cohort. So those are the wins I want to highlight tonight. And then you also saw the sixth graders, 38% of that cohort exceeded the state standards. So we just, these were some really great wins for us in a year that was, again, disrupted by weather. So then we look at academic progress, and this is really our students moving one or more levels up in the achievement scale. And this is reported publicly on the Minnesota Report Card, and I think that it's a little bit of a shift in thinking, but really, what we're looking at here is, compared to the state percentages, what percentage of Northfield students improved in achievement level? So they moved from partially meets to meets, or meets to exceeds, or do not meets to exceed. I mean, one or more achievement levels that would be reflected in those percentages. And again, thinking about, we test 2,100 kids, but this growth measure would only be applicable to students in fourth through eighth grade. They do not compute this for high school because of the gap between eighth grade and 10th grade. So really, we're talking about our fourth graders through eighth graders. So if you look at all students in reading, we had just slightly less than the state percentage for kids improving in achievement level. We're better in maintaining, that would be our meets and exceeds, and actually, our partials are in there as well. And then fewer kids where we were either remaining as a do not meet or falling in their achievement level. So I think that's good news. And then, in our focus on the achievement gap and the performance of our Hispanic students, I think this also provides good context, because we see those gaps, and the gaps are large, and the gaps are chronic. But when I look at the number of Hispanic kids as a percentage of our test takers moving levels, we look pretty good. I mean, we're not, we can do better, and we're committed to doing better, but we are not far off from the state average. In fact, we're slightly better. So the first two columns, the improve, the maintain, we want to be better than the state average, and the achievement level decreasing or remaining in do not meets, of course, we want fewer kids in that category than the state. So that's where we came out in reading. And in math, the performance is actually a little bit better. So on the left, you see the all-student comparison to the state, and on the right, are Hispanic students compared to this state Hispanic student population. And there, you can see that there's a little more of a win in our math progress. So our achievement gaps, I really appreciate everybody having the chance to have access to that Tableau dashboard prior to the meeting, because there's a lot of data that comes our way, especially the last week of August. I mean, starting really in the beginning of August, but that state data file comes the last week of August. And I think it's hard to process all of that in one sitting. And to provide you with that many slides, you'd be here a long time tonight. So I really appreciate that chance for you to have, to look at all of the slides prior to tonight. So really, in a nutshell, these are just an illustration of our gaps. You will notice that this year, we are breaking out our Hispanic and Latino population from other students of color, primarily because when we combine the two, the performance of our Hispanic population is masked in the other students of color, which for Northfield, those students tend to be higher performing than the state other students of color. So there, you can see how we look in reading. And that's math. And I think our biggest point of challenge this year was, sometimes, the interventions or strategies that we implement actually make our non-challenged students grow in proficiency at a really good clip, when those strategies are put into place, and we're still wanting to see that accelerated growth for our challenged student groups. So there, you can see reading, non-FRP versus FRP. And that's the same group in math. So our wins for achievement gaps. And again, we're always looking to replicate what works. Sibley, grade three, we have continued to see an increase in their FRP proficiency at that grade level. Kudos to them for their commitment to moving off kids. And so we are seeing a gap reduction in both reading and math at Sibley. Grade three at GVP, again, a two-year trend where their FRP proficiency is up 10%, which is fantastic. The interesting thing, I don't know if you saw that in the Tableau dashboard, but the grade three math performance for their non-FRP at Greenville Park was extraordinarily high. And again, it's hard to close a gap when that top gap is approaching, you know, 99%, 100%. And that's where we're at this year, just incredible performance. And I think it's important to point out that win, because GVP has some really high-performing non-challenged student groups that often don't show up because of their overall proficiency levels, but I think it's important to point out those wins as well. So Bridgewater, you will see that Hispanic proficiency rates skyrocketed this year. And one of the things that sets Bridgewater apart in terms of their Hispanic student population is, they tend to have Hispanic students with higher English language proficiency levels, and we know that from the access scores. So it makes it hard to compare Hispanic populations in grade three across the district, because those English language skills are quite different amongst the three schools. A win in grade six reading, and a win in grade eight. And that was particularly notable because the FRP gains were accelerated this year. And then same with grade eight math, the increased proficiency over three years, which is just tremendous. Questions?
Excellent. Okay. Questions, comments, we're going to listen.
Hi, Hope. Thank you for coming. I always love hearing what you can tell us and what we learn from you. So I have a couple of questions for you tonight. The first is just a general one about, you know, where we fall as a school district on the greater scheme of things with all the other school districts. And I'm wondering whether anybody's ever done a study that compares average income or something like, you know, so the socioeconomic status of each school districts to each other? So are the wealthier school districts ending up, you know, in the 99th percentile, and the poorer school districts on the lower levels? Has anyone ever tried to correlate income to performance?
Well, it's funny you should mention that, because I don't know if any of you saw the beating the odds article in the Star Tribune. When did I send you that, Matt? Was it this weekend?
Last week.
Yeah. And so they do exactly that. They take FRP status, and they do regression analysis for expected performance based on your FRP population and your actual performance. And all of Northfield schools fell in the meeting expectations based on their FRP percentages, except for Bridgewater in math fell into the beating the odds school, because their math performance was more than 10% greater than expected, given their FRP level. The one drawback to that study that I see is that they're only looking at FRP, so they're not looking at dual-labeled kids, FRP and DL, or, you know. So they use FRP status alone, but that's one of the studies that's been done across the state. And you do typically see higher performing districts, or higher socioeconomically, socioeconomic districts with higher proficiency rates, but not always, surprisingly enough. So in the media file, it is pretty interesting to see who's on the top sometimes, and it's pretty typical Minnetonka, Edina, the inner-ring suburbs, but sometimes it's very small districts who don't have a large end, but they're getting all their kids to pass. So there's definitely a relationship.
Thank you. My other question I had was about the fifth graders. You've been so good about telling us all these wins, and I love how you really focused on all the wins, but I do wonder about the fifth grade scores, whether they've been trending downward for a while, whether this is an abnormality. I think of the fifth grade parents, who are, kids are now in sixth grade, or maybe parents, people, kids coming into fifth grade, and wondering whether it was a cohort issue, or a snow day issue, or an instructional issue, or can you tell us anything more about what's happening with fifth grade?
So fifth grade reading, this for sure was an outlier year. They're not trending down. This happened to be a year that, and I believe it's related to the implementation of the new reading curriculum, because fifth grade had some structure set up prior to the implementation of CCC, and then needed to adjust this year, and I think it hit that grade level hard in terms of time constraints. Would you agree, Mary? And the second thing we do know, and I mean, it was within 24 hours of preliminary MCA results coming out, that I was being asked to go meet with fifth grade PLC teams about math in particular. Because we do know, since the adoption of EM4, that we have trended downward in fifth grade. It has hit fifth grade, where we can see that EM4, our math curriculum, and Minnesota State standards are not well-aligned. So we've seen a drop in strand scores, we've seen a drop in overall proficiency. And so what the team did this summer is go back to the standards and say, okay, our curriculum is here, the resource, right? But our standards, what are we using to teach these standards? Not, are we teaching this book cover to cover? And I think that they have done a great job aligning and really finding ways to instruct those standards much more tightly this year, and I'm excited to see what the results are. So for sure, math is a concern and has been on a downward trend. Science, again, this was kind of an off year for them in fifth grade, although we have seen a somewhat gradual decline, and that's something they're also looking at as well. So I think our biggest concern is math, and I think that they are on it.
I'm really glad to hear that fifth grade teachers are on it. I'm wondering, maybe this is a question for Dr. Hillman, are the sixth grade teachers doing anything for the fifth graders who are coming through who now have this gap?
Well, I'm going to ask Hope to help us with that, because she needs with all of those groups. And so sixth grade has been very active in looking at the incoming cohort and matching what they need to the kids coming in. So Hope, do you want to describe some of that?
Sure. So last year, you may recall, the sixth grade moved to a different model of, instead of having a pre-algebra class, and then all the rest of the sixth graders, they moved to a double A and a single A sections to try to, again, address a broader need than a pre-algebra class of 30 kids could do for them. And so I know that they weren't completely happy with their results last year, and we met as a team to kind of figure out where that cut score should be, and what other parts of a student profile might make them a better fit for A or double A. And then also, how they are teaching each of those classes after one year of instruction under that model. So they have shifted a few things this year. They know what's coming in with this cohort. It's not the first time, if you recall, two years ago, we were looking at the same kind of proficiency rate in fifth grade, and those kids ended up doing fine in sixth grade. So I think, you know, the team is constantly evaluating student placement, I would say, even as we speak, because they want to make sure that kids are in the right sections, getting the instruction that's right for them.
Thank you.
And I do think that that's one of the strengths of the middle school, Principal John O'Keefe, you know, really focused on not just saying, this is, we've taught sixth grade the same way every year. They understand that they need to reinvent themselves every year, because every year is a new group of students. They have to make sure that those students are able to adapt to the culture of the middle school, so the Where Everyone Belongs program, to make sure that kids have their social and emotional needs met first, before we start diving into some of these academic pieces, because there are a lot of transition to sixth grade, other than just the academics. And I think that they continue to try to get better at both of those pieces. And just a couple of examples that Hope has shared, I think are proof that that's what they do each year.
Other questions? Ellen?
Thank you. Great report. I really value how you used Tableau to provide the additional detail in a way that we can understand it with all the graphs. So I'm curious about something that isn't in the report, and some of the other strategies we've used, and I know in the past that you've loved it in terms of data. I'm thinking about the Summer Plus program and the Middle School Youth Center, and now we have these academic coaches at the high school. Have we looked, like, in some of your data retreats, and probably not with this new August data, but thinking about what can we understand about the additional supports that we're, like, in your report, you say, we have to get this, in order to address the gap, we have to get the acceleration to be greater for those students. And so what are the levers that we have that we think might be working from some of the sort of second-level analysis that you've been able to do?
So I think one of the exciting things that I've seen at the middle school level is the engagement of Torch with families. is the engagement of Torch with families. So for instance, last year I was asked to speak at one of the dinners about assessment and the gaps that exist. And I think it was a huge aha for me that we need to bring the parents to the table because they're interested and they want their kids to succeed. They just don't necessarily know how to navigate our system as much as someone else might. And so in that line, Jenny Link at the middle school has created this guidebook for parents that she shared at the EOT meeting last week, which is just phenomenal, talking about really the nuts and bolts of how school works and what the expectations are and that there's homework and you actually have to look and make sure that your homework, your child's homework is done because they do have questions about that. So one of the parents at that meeting was like, okay, what do we do? Like she just, she's ready to attack the problem. So I think engaging the parents through the Torch program and other activities that they have through that after school programming is great. The Summer Plus program and the community school actually draw families in from all age levels surprisingly to GVP. And I think that they're using those evening hours to begin more parent education. And I just met with that team last Friday and they're talking about how do we get even more parents in? Like we get lots of kids, now we want their parents in too. And what kind of programming could they offer that would be attractive to parents and really address some of the questions that they have more specifically? So I think that's helping. And then I think honestly, the partnership with the preschools and making sure that every student has a chance to get a quality preschool experience is huge. And we're not there yet, but boy, I'll tell you what, we have a concentrated effort of all sorts of people working on it. And I think that's huge.
Other questions? No?
I'm looking at the chart on page seven where Northfield Performance Overview with the State Section. Specifically to the section on the high school. In math and reading, 35 and 40% of the schools do better than Northfield.
That's true.
I gotta say, I take no comfort that a third of the districts in the state are doing better educating our high school students than we are. Do we have any information on what characteristics those schools have that we could learn from?
We have started to look at some of that and I appreciate that question, Joel, because one of the things we struggle with at the high school level is getting not only our students, but our adults invested in the MCA versus the ACT. Because honestly, they see much more value in the ACT. So the switch that we made to go to one day of testing where we basically are in one day testing ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, while the 12th graders are doing their capstone, you know, we've gotten good feedback from students on that day that they like that kind of testing format instead of having to come to the computer lab multiple days at a time, missing classes to finish. We haven't seen it unfortunately play out in the proficiency rates as much as we would have liked them to see, but anecdotally it's playing out as a positive. So I think there's been some interesting conversation at the high school about what we can do to help kids understand that getting a minimum score on the MCA will allow them to be exempted from remedial coursework at Minskew schools. And the alignment of MCA to ACT scores and really publicizing that a little bit more, I think will help. And the CCR team is working on the communication effort to try and get kids more aware of what these tests can tell us and tell them about their academics. So it's really, I think, getting our kids invested in doing their best on the MCA.
Yeah, sure.
Well, then how would that conversation be different than any other school's conversation with their high schoolers? Wouldn't they all have the same conversation and the same comments?
There's some high schools doing some other interesting things like incentivizing their kids for MCA performance, which we have not done yet. So they earn a certain number of points in their class if they pass the MCA. So there are some other things that high schools are doing in the state to get their kids to reach higher levels of performance on the MCA. And those are things that different people are talking about. We have new staff members from other districts now joining our high school and coming with fresh ideas about how to motivate kids for the MCA. But honestly, there has not been a big push here about the MCA. It's been more ACT focused.
Thank you. Very informative.
Yeah, well, could you talk about that just a little bit because there are some questions that high school students have figured out that the MCA means nothing for me for graduation. So I would say when you look at our math results, you know, we're outperforming 88% of the schools in the state. My question, Hope, would be when we look at how we perform against the rest of the state on this assessment that does not have any graduation outcome kinds of pieces versus how we perform against the state on the ACT where there's a pretty substantial amount of worth there to our high school students. Do those two, is that a tale of two cities there is what I'm asking?
Well, it's a little harder to tell because the ACT, all they give us is an average score for us against the average for Minnesota and the average for the state. So I don't get, what I get for this is an actual district by district breakdown. I don't get that for ACT. So it's hard for me, I know on average we're outperforming the state, but I don't have the same granularity of, hey, I know how every district did on the ACT.
And I think, Noah, one more thing I want to point out is that we are recognizing this struggle. And so we're looking at, we want to have assessments that inform us and help us provide the best option for kids to be choice ready at the end of high school. So one of the things that we've changed this year at the high school, as you saw in their school improvement plan, that they are focusing on both the ACT and, so the way the statement is written, the ACT and/or the AccuPlace for assessment. The AccuPlace for assessment is a tool that many of the state colleges and technical colleges use to assess college readiness. So we have been trying to look at what is the tool that we think gives us good academic information to say, how is the system performing? And where there is a carrot at the end of it for adolescents who can quickly figure out whether this is something that I need to do or something that I just have to do to be done with. And we have to understand it's part of the teenage psyche to a certain extent. And I think reasonable people can disagree on ways to incentivize or think about different ways to approach the system, if you will, at the high school level. I think we've looked at saying, are there other normed assessments that we can use that might better tell us the health of our academic system? Is that fair to say?
At the high school, yeah. But we do have one example, Noah, of incentivizing and that was eighth grade science. And they did it very fairly and they thought long and hard about it. But you saw last year and it continued this year where there was a significant increase based on taking the test back to the classroom on iPads and offering incentive to students. So I've brought that up here, you know, they used to incentivize the MAP test at the high school where if kids met their growth target, they were giving them points toward their grade. So I think it's something that needs to be discussed, but overall, I just think we need to do a better job communicating to our kids.
Thank you.
Excellent. Questions? Any other comments? Tom?
So you talk a lot about the, of the snow days as having an effect. Were there or could there be any other common thread? Did all the MCA tests change? Language in them change such that depending on where you are in society, you may interpret the question differently? Let's see, they're given in the middle of April and the winter dried down and the kids are tired of taking tests in school and whatnot by that point? I mean, are there, and how, and it's one chat, how much would, or how does missing the snow days affect the school process such that that would impact the test, which is a month or two or three later?
So those are great questions. Definitively, I can say that the test did not change this year. So that's great. We've been pretty stable in MCA land since everybody moved to MCA three. But I will tell you that students start testing in the beginning of April. They come back from spring break, they have a week, and then they start MCA testing. What we do know from our analysis of flexible learning day grades was that the middle school was disproportionately hit by students who struggled with the assignment level of the flexible learning days. Now, that's all, that's been tweaked. I mean, we learned and we made some adjustments. But teachers were talking about the disruption in just straight instruction, right? So you came back in January and then and you were good, but February we were hit pretty hard. March comes and we have spring break. So it really was sort of a piecemeal January to April. And when you have gaps like that, it's hard to make sure, it's harder to make sure that that mastery is there and secure. And that's what I heard anecdotally from especially our math teachers at secondary. So I think we're not going to know until this year if we have a calm winter because I just look at those numbers and I think the entire state fell and we, you know, we saw especially in math, some bigger hits. So I think we need to just keep everybody like, we're going to go back after it. And I will see how it plays out. So I hope that answers that, Tom.
Yeah, it does. And the farmer's almanac is not too promising.
I know, I saw that.
It's not even talked about.
All right. Excellent. So any other final questions or comments? I think Amy started well in saying, we always look forward to having you here, not only for sharing data, but I think it's a really good opportunity for us to thank you for your work. I think of all the site improvement plans from all of our buildings and how many times your name came up in conversation and tonight, how many times I've met with this group, I've met with this group. So you do a phenomenal job and I think that probably even listening thinking, it's the Hope Langston Committee, but it's just you. You are one person. And I think the most inspiring thing you said tonight was that the sharing of a data and instructional strategies has become a norm. And I think that that is a testament to you and the excitement and the passion that you bring to this position and the way that you just are willing to take on a challenge and people feel comfortable asking you a question, you know, oh, I'll get on that. You know, and literally probably the next day they have an email with a chart and a graph so they know you just have become such an amazing resource for our district and for everyone. And so we just, we can't thank you enough for your work.
Well, thanks. I appreciate it. But I have to tell you, I am the lucky one because there are just people who are always, always moving and shaking and trying to, are committed to moving our kids forward. And it's really, I'm the lucky one that gets to work with them, so.
Thank you very much for your work.
Thanks.
Excellent. Okay. So our last item for discussion tonight, we welcome Superintendent Dr. Hillman, who will do a state of the district overview, which again, we always look forward to. So excellent reports.
Well, I'm going to warn you upfront, I'm fighting a little bit of a cold, which I'm blaming my 15-year-old son for. So I will bring the energy as the best I can tonight. I'm going to have my water if that's okay. So this is one of my favorite reports of the year because we have a chance to talk about celebrations and challenges for the district over the last year, many of which you have already kind of heard tonight. But as you know, this is a preview and we'll be providing the same presentation for the community on October 30th at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Luncheon. And so looking forward to sharing that with our friends at the Chamber and the rest of the community. So this is the state of the district for 2019-20. And we always start with our celebrations. And so in your packet, you had a pretty detailed list that we always try to follow the Chris Richardson rule of keeping things on one front page and one back page, but this year that just didn't work because we had quite a few things to talk through. So when we think about our teaching and learning celebrations, the new reading curriculum is pretty substantial. And last year, not only is it a new curriculum and as Hope Langston previewed, many schools when they implement a new curriculum experience something called an implementation dip where they will go backwards in their results for the first year. And overall, we saw some good wins, especially at third and fourth grade. But that's not just because of the materials. It's really because of the focus on the change in the way that we teach reading. And last year, we had 27 hours of professional development for third through fifth graders in teaching reading and 33 hours of professional development for folks in kindergarten through second grade. And so when we focus on reading instruction and we not only provide a different resource that we believe aligns better with the state's standards and in addition, provide people the opportunity to improve their craft, we know that that's a recipe for success. And that resulted in another grade level win in grade three. We know that that's a benchmark that we are looking at very closely, not just in the school district, but across the community. We know that a substantial amount of research backs the fact that if you're reading well by the end of third grade, you're on track for academic success. It doesn't mean that if you're not reading proficiently at the end of third grade, we can't get you there, but we know that that's a benchmark that we are looking at. And we're happy that over the last two years, we've seen an increase in 11 percentage points in third grade reading proficiency. I think that shows what can happen when the community rallies around a specific benchmark and says that we're going to do this in typical Northfield fashion we had. Another great win is our eighth grade science results in terms of compared to the rest of the state of Minnesota. As you heard Hope mention, our performance was better than 96% of Minnesota districts. Another tool that we are looking, how can we get you additional information about the health of our system is something called the Minnesota Student Survey. And that's really a survey that is given every three years and tracks cohorts over time around a variety of social, emotional, mental health and other kinds of physical health issues. And one of the key things, as you know, is that we believe that relationships are the foundation for all learning. And our Minnesota Student Survey results say that 93% of the students in the district believe that their teachers care about them. That's either agree or strongly agree with that statement. We also look at how are we sending kids off after high school as they're going to college? And 84% of the 460 advanced placement exams taken in the last school year qualified students for college credit. Now, that doesn't mean that they got college credit at the school that they went to, but that means that they got a three, four, or five and thus for schools taking AP credit that they got that, or they qualified for that college credit. And we think, again, that's a very similar number that we've seen over the last several years. And again, so that means that students are leaving here sometimes with more than a semester's worth of college done. And that's a pretty good gift for a lot of those students. When we look at the ACT test, another exam that we use as a test of our health, Northfield High School continues to outperform state and national averages on that assessment. You've heard our talk about our work with the Student Education Group. And I'm going to reference three different stakeholder surveys this evening. And the first of which is our Parent Satisfaction Survey. And this was conducted last spring. We had over a thousand parents participate in this and we earned an overall rating of 4.09 on a five-point scale. And what we're working on is rolling those survey results out to subsets of parent groups. This is something we're going to work on getting better over the next year. We're moving the survey implementation earlier in the school year so we have time before the end of the school year to share those results with parent groups. Frankly, we just ran out of time last year, so we're working on that as we begin the fall. You'll also see some other items throughout this celebrations and challenges presentation relating to that Parent Satisfaction Survey. The Northfield High School Flex Period, we've heard several reports on that. The first change to the high school schedule since the early 1980s. And so we believe that the implementation and bringing that forward was something that we should be celebrating. We're also celebrating the fact that Director of Teaching and Learning, Mary Grace Hansen, led a task force or a committee last spring to do some initial research on the advantages of a later school start time. That group of parents and teachers and students looked at the compelling research that some of our public comment speakers tonight shared. And they made a recommendation to you to ask administration to create a technical plan that would show how would a later school start time fare here in Northfield. And so we are working on that. You'll see that also in the challenges this evening just because it's something that we're working on. So we're very pleased to move that ahead. We're also thrilled with the second year of the implementation of the Second Step Social Emotional Learning Curriculum. As you recall, not this year, but the year before, we implemented that in grades pre-K through eight. And so it's the first time that we are intentionally teaching a curriculum designed to support the social, emotional skills of our students in a way that is very consistent and intentional in somewhat similar way to what, how we teach reading and mathematics. in somewhat similar way to what, how we teach reading and mathematics. And so when we, we have typically done year one very well in implementations and one of the things our administrative team is focused on is cementing those habits in the second year. So you know that as part of my superintendent evaluation last year, I submitted to you some additional information about the second year of Second Step. And I was thrilled to hear that the Rochester Public Schools adopted Second Step for their elementary schools beginning this year. So we always like it when we're a little bit of ahead of a city of the first class. Again, we had what we thought would be a pilot for e-learning days that we're now calling flexible learning days, e-learning days, in order to align what the state definition is. And we anticipated a pilot and we ended up, as you know, with a case study. We had numerous data, data points, including parent surveys and including the statistics class here at the high school who also conducted a follow-up parent survey. We have worked with the statistics class from Carlton College to do another analysis of that survey data to make sure what we were thinking was on track and we are actually going to be conducting another, we're going to have them look at some additional survey data this fall to do any final tweaks. And all of the things that we brought forward and the change of the plan for year two was a result of that feedback. And so we consider that to be a celebration that we were able to have the ultimate opportunity to try it out, as you would expect, I would say. We are also thrilled to increase the career technical education opportunities for our students, including a unique summer credit-bearing class here at the high school that was a partnership between the school and several regional businesses. And the Mechatronics Class, which is built, built on the industry 4.0 curriculum, gave students an opportunity who may not have been able to fit a traditional technology education, or we used to think vocational education course into their class list during the, or their schedule during the school year. They had a chance to come in with teacher Mark Waitala. There were representatives from Malto Mill, a representative from, from business in Prior Lake, as well as Forest America in Hydraulics and talked about various components that are really sorely needed skills regionally, sorely needed technical skills. We also did some other, I think, unique things. You heard tonight about the auditorium technician involving high school students. There's our career technical internship. We also offered all seniors the opportunity for free to be able to come in over spring break for a one-day serve-safe course in conjunction with our Child Nutrition Department. Students who took that course and effectively completed it are now eligible for a food manager certificate, which really opens up job opportunities for them in the culinary field. We also offered something that we now know we have to rename, it was called the Boiler, Initial Boiler License Certification Course. Apparently, that one did not speak very well to high school students because we had nobody sign up for it. But I share that failure as a win because as Jim Colson, our Director of Buildings and Rounds, was talking about that program with his head custodians, our district electrician, Duke Bjorklund, standing right there, said, you know what? My electrical license allows me to take an apprentice. So we had gone into this not thinking of this and we created an electrician apprentice program. Adam Imdek, who is standing in that bucket truck there, spent a lot of time this summer doing things like replacing lights with LED, did a lot of, in this case, they're actually replacing exterior lights with LEDs and it was highly successful. And so here's an example of how when we try to push the envelope, but we fail, something positive can come from that as well. We're also creating a much, a more exciting name for that boiler certification class for the year. Anybody who's got any suggestions, please let us know. We also want to say that one of the things that we know that we had avoided for several years was really investing in our leadership. And our partnership with Student Education really demonstrates the research behind it and making sure that our leaders get professional development as well. So we conducted five leadership institutes for 22 of our district-level leaders this past full year in partnership with Student Education, you know, working on things like organizational change and a topic called We They to make sure that our school district is moving ahead in one direction. Look at learning how to actually not only receive survey data, but how to roll that survey data out and create action plans and a reporting strategy that allows people to be communicated with about how they, how we are addressing those concerns and how we're celebrating the wins. And so that's another piece that we're really thrilled with in terms of the school leadership development institutes this year. So we know that a lot of learning happens in the classroom, but we also know that there's a lot of learning that happens outside the classroom that we cannot replicate in any other way than co-curricular activities. And I'm pleased to report to you that 82% of Northfield High School students participated in at least one co-curricular activity. And we all know that when students participate in co-curricular activities, they are more engaged in the school and they are learning valuable skills that cannot be taught outside of those kinds of efforts. It's one of the reasons we really encourage students to participate. And of course, we have our state champion softball team there as well. In the, in the packet, I listed the numerous other section conference and state champions that we had, both team and individual. And so we want to congratulate all of those students who demonstrated excellence in their work last year in our activities. As we turn to our Board of Education, I have joked with some of you before, I'm thrilled not to be, having to be presenting 55 times on an election this fall, but we should really celebrate the fact that 63% of the people in the Northfield Public Schools who voted last November approved our elementary projects. And as you know, you've been getting construction updates since January, we are so excited about our bond referendum. We also are pleased that our financial stability has stayed strong, have not made budget reductions since 2011. That, as you know, is always a trick to keep going for reasons I'll share a little bit later. We are also thrilled to continue collaboration with community groups like Northfield Promise and the Chamber of Commerce. We are continuing our work as one of only three public schools in the state that have completed the rigorous process to be a charter school authorizer. And Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Grace Hansen and I were today up at the Minnesota Department of Education for the annual Charter School Authorizers Conference and we always come away with some wins from that, things that we have learned, things that other authorizers can suggest to us to improve our service to our two outstanding charter schools. I'm always proud to say that in a lot of communities, charter schools and the traditional public schools are loggerheads. There's competition, they feel that they're out for each other and that is not the case. We have great partnership with both of our outstanding charter schools here and within the school district. Also, we conducted an employee engagement survey and more than 480 people participated in that inaugural survey. And overall, the district received a 4.06 on a five-point scale. And again, looking at the areas where, where we're wanting to win, in fact, the best win there are people believing that their supervisor really does care about them. And then looking at in terms of the areas for growth, really focusing on that our employees want more feedback about what they can do to improve. So again, looking at both ends, the things that are good about the results from those survey and then what are those areas where we can improve our performance as an employer to help people do their best work. I also want to congratulate the board on their great work last year with our District Youth Council, two fine representatives right over here. And last year, the DYC held its first ever, really, I called it a town hall kind of meeting with our school board and several of you participated in that. That was a goal that the DYC had had for several years and we are really thrilled that that partnership came together this past year. So when we think about community services, I want to direct your attention to the fact that our community school program at Greenville Park drew over 1,800 participants. And that includes students, teachers, and family members. Now get ready for this one, more than 45,000 children, youth, and adults participated in some kind of community services program. Forty-five thousand. Now that's a, a duplicated count, but still I think that shows how many people are accessing our community services program. Over 122,000 people had access to a school district facility through community services and that's a 21,000-person increase over the previous year. So very well done. We also had 718 children participate in the Ventures Program and we supported 50 students receiving scholarships in the hand-to-hand preschool. So again, you just heard the Community Services School Improvement Plan tonight and so obviously Erin gave us even a lot more information than that. When we think about district services, Jimmy Colson and his team had a million dollars in maintenance projects this year. I was talking with Dr. Hardy just before and this is the first time he's been in the high school to see all of the painting that had happened. Want to make sure you take a look at the H Wing, how we've removed lockers and replaced them with benches. Again, create those modern and flexible spaces that we are, are really striving for. And so it ranges from things like that that are very visible to the concrete pad out in front of door one here at the high school that I venture to guess no one notices changed unless you need to use a wheelchair where you knew that last year it was in disrepair and it was really cracking and now that is fixed and repaired. So people who have to access our building with a wheelchair, they notice, but those of us who are able-bodied probably would never notice. And so those are the range of the kinds of things that we work on, things that are very visible to most people, to other things that are not visible to most people, including the LED lights that I mentioned that we are working on continuing to replace. You might not be aware, but we had a little bit of snow last winter. These are the jokes, people, so. And what I want people to realize is that, you know, our grounds team plows over 21 acres of snow every time that they have to plow. Twenty-one acres. And that happened on at least 14 occasions because I asked Jim, how many snow events did we have last? He says, I came in 14 times. And that's in addition to the smaller stuff that the, the smaller crew of our, our grounds people handle themselves. We also plow 2.2 miles of trails. And so I think that when people come in and the parking lots are clear, they think there's some kind of magic that happens, but really it's people being up at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning to make sure that the sites are ready for people to get in to the best of our ability. We also want to champion once again our health and dental insurance programs because these are areas that have really helped us recruit and retain high-quality individuals. And you may remember, we were recognized for our health insurance program with a local government innovation award by the University of Minnesota Humphrey Institute. Our, we achieved the seventh consecutive year of premium stability for our employees. We've not had a premium increase and we've actually reduced premiums once over that time where it stayed reduced compared to the year before for seven years. Talk to anybody else and I would like you to find at least a couple of other employers who have not had a premium increase and have actually reduced their premiums in the last seven years. And this is a result of the wildly successful self-funded health insurance program. And it even gets more impressive when you look at our dental program where premiums have not increased there in 14 years. And so that's an area that a lot of people won't see, but when we recruit people from other districts where you might look at the salary being higher, when we look at net take-home pay, we are really competitive even with districts to our north who are traditionally paying more. We also want to congratulate the Child Nutrition Department. They had a disproportionate impact at Northfield High School because of the change in the way that they serve things during the flex hour. So they had approximately 30% less service time at the high school. They had 11 less service days due to weather-related cancellations and they maintained their fund balance. Not bad for pretty good proven financial management by Stephanie Strummy and her crew. She's a model of continuous improvement. When the service model changed, there was no complaining, there was no whining. She said, what can we do differently to make sure to serve students because we know that the flex time is good for kids? We have to adapt our progress to be able to do that. I could not be more proud of our Child Nutrition Department and their modeling of what continuous improvement really means. Our tech services staff have not increased in the number of people working there since 2011 or so. So we have gone from desktop computers and computer labs to almost all mobile devices with the same FTE roughly. They processed 1,836 adult inserted tickets last year. That doesn't mean all the help that high school students got over here at the media center calendar or at the, at the middle school. We also saw a successful iPad transition this year from our previous lease to our new devices, including the new Logitech CRAN that I know you've seen. And when we did our bid for our previous devices, the school district brought in $312,000 to pay off the last payment of the lease. And as you well know, it also helped us invest in some other technology to support areas where the iPad is not as perfect as it should be, but there is no device that's perfect. So we've invested in some Chromebook cards and some other kinds of things to make sure that we're supporting kids at various needs in their technology, in the technology that serves them. We had 51 new employees, over 1,700 volunteer background checks. And we know it's, it's almost the New England Patriots of the school finance world. Mal Valmerdstor from the Finance Department won the School Finance Reporting Award yet again, I think that's the seventh year in a row or the eighth year in a row?
I think it was seven.
Okay, so seven consecutive years that we've won that. We are also very proud to look at that you remember years ago, a governor thought that 80% of your expenditures going directly to the classroom was the gold standard. You know, we've routinely exceeded that. And again, 82, 82% of expenditures are planned directly for classroom support. And finally, on our district services survey, that's the way that the school buildings rate the services that they get from the district-level departments. Our overall mean rating was 4.1 on a five-point scale. And again, our district-level departments do the exact same things that our buildings do with their employee engagement survey and the parent satisfaction survey. What are the areas we need to celebrate? What are the areas to improve and create action plans with reporting mechanisms to continue improvement there? In student services, I like to call Cheryl Hall man and president because she's now the president of the Minnesota Association of Special Education Administrators. And again, Cheryl is just the latest in a long line of people who have led their respective organizations, professional organizations. We wanted to, also want to welcome Maimoun Akita, who is our new school nurse. And Maimoun, of course, replaces Elizabeth Beatty, who had been here for years and years and retired with her husband, John. Well-deserved retirement, but Elizabeth had been here for more than two decades. And so we were thrilled to have a high-quality replacement for Elizabeth and Maimoun is just doing a great job as she has gotten started. Our Student Services Department also has 635 active IEPs that it is managing and they are leading the region with professional development. And I want to point out that there are two pieces in the narrative. One, the bridging the gap with assisted, augmentative, assisted communication. That improved access to instruction outcomes for all students through, through the use of assistive technology. And our staff presented this at the prestigious Closing the Gaps Conference in Alexandria, Minnesota. You'll also notice that our behavioral specialist, Kelly Furkob, was instrumental in creating something called a Registered Behavior Technician Training. And that's a regional 40-hour training for teachers and educational assistants and it was receiving numerous positive reviews for folks in the Region 10 area. And finally, we want to talk about the fact that we have increased access to no-cost school mental health services with a partnership with Fernbrook. Five of our six schools will have this in place in 2019-20 to meet the growing mental health needs of our students. There's some qualification that has to happen for those services, but it is matching no-cost mental health assistance with students who would not be able to get it in other ways. And so while there's some qualifications, we think that's an exciting step in the right direction. So normally I try to limit myself to 13 challenges every year, but we went to 14 this year. It's, it's okay. So that one of the first challenges that we're looking at is making sure that we continue to maintain a welcoming environment while securing our schools. And that was really one of the focuses of the bond reform in 2018, a strong start and secure schools. This is a picture, of course, an artist rendition of what the new Bridgewater Elementary entrance will look like. And that's always the balance, right? We know that the relationships that we form with kids is the best form of security that we have. There's nothing that even comes closer. You can lock down a building, but if people don't trust the adults in it, you are probably no safer than with a building that's wide open. So of course, we focus on the relationships, but we also have to take those reasonable steps to make sure that access is appropriately limited for people who don't need to be there. I think that we have done that and are achieving that balance. We will, next year, have achieved that balance between being welcoming facilities and at the same time, being secure. As our demographics change, one of the truths that we will have to face here in Northfield is that we are not as culturally competent as we think we are. And we have this really great history of embracing immigrant communities and making sure that we are looking out for our friends and neighbors. But as our demographics continue to change, we know that we need to get better at this. So a week ago Monday, we hosted the Equity Alliance of Minnesota, who provide an implicit bias training for all of our employees and we're very proud of that. They'll be coming back on October 3rd to provide that same exact presentation for any interested parents and community members. Pelsby, the Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board, also has a new requirement for teachers who are renewing their license in that they have eight hours of cultural competency training. We are working with the Equity Alliance of Minnesota to continue this, to make sure that specifically our students of color, our immigrant students, are not only feeling welcomed and accepted, but more than that, and actively supported. And so we have a, we have a view of ourselves in this community as being welcoming and accepting. I think for the most part, there's a lot of actions that suggest that. What I can tell you from over a year of listening to students and other folks in the community, we have some room to grow. And we, again, we won't whine, we won't complain. What we're going to say is what's next? And we're going to find what are the ways that we can do to make sure, not to talk about it, but to do things that actively support specifically our families of color. Construction, so far, so good. Things have gone very well. We're very pleased with communities in construction and their communication to us and our families about things, just that, for example, just a minor change in the drop-off procedure at Bridgewater Elementary. And again, so far, so good. We will continue to try to stay ahead of that, to be on time and on budget, but we know that that's a thing that we're going to be working on probably for the next at least 12 months. And then even as buildings open, there are some things that we'll have to do after buildings open to make sure that we adapt to things that we didn't think could happen. But we are really trying hard through prudent oversight and good management to make sure that we are keeping on track and that those challenges are limited. As you know, funding is essential and the fact is that while we have a community that's very supportive, the legislature is batting five for 12. very supportive, the legislature is batting five for 27. And so this last year, inexplicably to me, people were championing the 2% and 2% increases offered by the state legislature to our pure pupil basic formula as a win, yet not matching inflation. Again, and so I don't know how many times we have to say it, but people do not take this seriously. When you do not get funding from your biggest funding source that matches inflation, everyone is playing catch-up. And in Northfield, we've navigated that financial labyrinth better than most, but it catches up with everybody at some point. And so only five of the last 27 years has the per-pupil formula basic increase matched the implicit price deflator. And I think we just, we have now normalized that that's acceptable. It is not, and we will continue our advocacy at the Capitol to make sure that people know that you at least have to match inflation when one of two of your state constitutional requirements is to provide a uniform system of public schools. I know that you've never heard me say that before. Also, the cross subsidy. So our special education services are morally imperative, and yet we continue to spend more from our general fund to match mandated special education services. We are now at $5 million of our general fund. Approximately 6% of our overall expenditures are going to cover costs that are required by the state and federal governments in special education programs, but are not reimbursed. When we think about reading, we had a very good first year with our, our new reading curriculum from the Center for Collaborative Classroom. And we know that we need to make that same sense of urgency in year two to cement that. And so our teaching and learning department, our principals, our academic coaches are really working hard to make sure that year two of CCC is even better than year one. And we think that that's really important to continue increasing, obviously, the proficiency of our students in their reading. The, uh, teacher shortage is real, and it's frankly frightening. Uh, we are hearing statistics out of California where 50% less people are applying to be in colleges of education than years previous. And we know that the coast sometimes are a good harbinger of what we will see in several years. Just to give you an example, in the area of career technical education, we had an opening. I called the, there's only one college in the state of Minnesota that offers that teaching license degree, and they had a total of two, two graduates. In an area where we are being told is incredibly important to expand our programming, we had two new licensed teachers last year in the entire state. Now, there are a couple of Wisconsin schools that can also contribute. Uh, we were very fortunate to find an experienced licensed career technical education teacher this summer, and frankly, we, we believe we're lucky. But we're also starting to see some of these reductions in the pools and other areas that we weren't traditionally all that concerned about. So making sure that we are able to recruit and retain the highest quality educators is always a challenge, and we continue to work hard to make that happen. We need to defeat the gap, and as Hope mentioned before, is our, our gap is unacceptable. The gap between our, our white students and our students of color in terms of specifically our Hispanic demographic, the academic achievement gap is something that none of us can accept. So we are working diligently, relentlessly to find what is the right solution to not just closing the gap, but eliminating it. One of the programs here is, uh, the Minnesota Reading Corps. We expanded our Minnesota Reading Corps yet again this year, and I'm thrilled that we have been working on having some of our high school graduates come back. And on the right, there's Ray. She's a former DYC member who went on Rotary Exchange last year, and she came back, and she is one of our reading corps tutors at Bridgewater to join a couple of other students that we have at Sibley, who started that last year. So again, in terms of addressing two pieces, working on providing timely and evidence-based intervention with students to help decrease the gap by improving proficiency skills and students who have not demonstrated that to this point, and also work at, working on diversifying our teaching staff because what we're hoping is that students who get into the Minnesota Reading Corps or the Minnesota Math Corps may consider going on for a degree in education, and we'd like to have the first chance to hire them when they're done. So we're trying to attack a couple of things with that reading and math corps program. Continue to work to customize learning is an ongoing, uh, challenge that we continue to pursue because we know that not every child comes into our school every day with all of the different things that everyone else comes in. Everyone's unique, we're all different, we all learn in different ways. Yet we are still working in a system that was designed to really look like a factory model of education. You'd say, oh, that should be easy to fix. Well, we all know that it's not, but we continue to take steps to try to make sure that we are customizing our learning experience for our students, as evidenced by this summer's career technical education offering. It's just thinking about something differently, and we can make that change by doing one of those changes each at a time. One of our challenges will be finalizing the proposal that we'll make to you for a later school start time. As you noticed in part of my superintendent goals that you'll be approving later this evening, I've committed to providing you a technical plan no later than December 1st. Of course, I gave myself a little bit of extra time so we can have that to you before. But we know that the research is unequivocal. The scientific and medical research is there. The question is, when we operationalize it, is that something that we are able to do in Northfield? And we plan to come to you with, uh, the best schedule that we can, and we know that it's something that is good for kids. Now, it's a matter of making sure, are we able to operationalize that in a way that is something that we can, um, is acceptable in our school community? I think we have a great opportunity to do that. Uh, we've been working on this for some time, and, uh, again, we'll be coming to you with that technical plan, developing that over the next couple of months. Finally, I've talked to you, or a couple more things here. I, I've talked to you before about the definition of success and how our students sometimes unintentionally feel this pressure that the only way to be successful after high school in Northfield is to pursue not only a four-year college degree, but a highly selective four-year college degree. We work on trying to break the mindset of that there's only one way to be highly successful after high school. We are switching the terminology to be something called choice-ready. So that means when you graduate from Northfield Public Schools, I have the academic skills to pursue whatever I'd like. I have the social, emotional, and decision-making skills to be able to have the confidence to pursue something that I'm passionate about. And so sometimes when we talk about, I, I'm very concerned right now about the way folks are talking about not needing to have college. And I think that comes from a very privileged position. Of course, we want every student to have the opportunity to go to college. If they choose something else, that's fine, but what we want to make sure is that we communicate to kids that we want you to have the chance to go to a four-year school if that's what you're passionate about. And if you're not passionate about that, and there's a two-year technical, technical degree, you want to enter the workforce right away, you want to go into the military, volunteer service, our job is to say to you, how can we help you? And so really continue to define what success is, or more importantly, maybe don't define it. We continue our partnership with Studer Education, and we want to get better at getting better. So not just having continuous improvement, say it'd be something we talk about, but something that is a living, breathing, everyday experience, is just part of our culture. And we can, you, it's, you think that happens, but it's harder than you would think on the outside, so we're working diligently to make that happen. Finally, one of the things that we're working on with our employee engagement process is a tactic called leader rounding. And what this means is we are endeavoring to have one of our leaders meet with every employee during this school year. We're still finalizing the plan for this year, but what we know is, in conjunction with employee engagement surveys and this face-to-face discussion with employees telling us what they enjoy about their work, what are the hurdles from their doing their best work, we know that that's the change agent for all of the other things because when people feel autonomy and purpose in their work, we know that workplaces change for the better. And so we're really leveraging the training that we've had and working to implement this tactic for the next year. But if you think about 22 people trying to round with 600 employees, that's where the challenge comes in. So we're very confident that we'll be able to get there. So with that, that is my celebrations and challenges for the, oh, one more. Sorry. So the other part, as I mentioned before, parents have told us that they would really appreciate more positive feedback about their students. And so you've seen that through our school improvement plan goals, that we've taken that part of the parent satisfaction survey very seriously, and every school improvement plan included a goal to be intentional about reaching out to our families with more information about their students and specifically positive feedback about their students. So that's the 14th challenge that we added this year. So with that, I want to thank you, and would it stand for any questions you might have at this time?
Excellent report. Thank you. Uh, questions, comments for board members? Amy?
This isn't really a question. It's just, um, I love your enthusiasm. I love your attention to all of the different people involved in the school community. I love your always continuing board movement, always improving, and I just want to thank you for being such an excellent superintendent of our district.
Well said. Thank you, Amy.
As I tell many of you, it is truly my privilege to be doing this job in this place at this time. I have the best job in Northfield. Uh, doesn't mean it's not hard from day to day, but it is really a privilege to get to do this here, and I'm grateful for your support.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thanks for your report and all your hard work. Kind of more of a vision question of, you know, K through 12 in the next 10 years. I mean, what major changes do you see coming, shifts?
So that's a 40-minute presentation that I'll whittle down to in about three bullet points here. Uh, I think there's a couple of things. The challenge will continue to be until we're really willing to look at education holistically. Eliminating our achievement gaps is going to be something you're going to be hearing about because Minnesota has the worst achievement gap in the nation, and we know that it's really important to have a highly trained workforce, right? So I think this is going to be the existential question for our state in the next 10 years as to whether we continue to be a place where business wants to come or not. Businesses will, regardless of the economic climate, will go to a place where they know that they have a highly educated workforce. And so as our demographics change, and as we continue to have friends and neighbors moving from war-torn parts of the nation, of the world, and other areas where there may have been interruptions in students' learning, um, we will have to really change the way that we look at supporting students. And it ranges from that kind of very dire circumstance to really supporting kids in whatever way it is that they would like to go. So maybe a student is interested in a foreign language that we don't offer here. How do we create some kind of environment where they're able to do that here within our walls, maybe using some kind of online environment to support them in that way? Again, um, technology will never overtake face-to-face education, but when you partner it together, it can be an accelerator when the balance is correct. And so those are some of the kinds of challenges on that front I see. I still see some of the K-12 funding issues being major. Minnesota wants to be the education state, but we continue to lose ground against other similarly situated states in terms of the support of the state for our school districts. And this is a battle we all have to continue to fight to make sure that we don't lose that, uh, structure. Uh, those are the two areas I would limit myself right now to saying, I think, are among the largest challenge. Of course, we do not know, we respond to what is happening in society. And I think we are at a time in our history where that seems to be changing on almost a daily basis, and our job to respond and make sure that kids have the skills, the academic, social, emotional, and decision-making skills to be successful. Those themes never change. How they implement, or how we implement them will change. And so I would say that the crystal ball is not as clear as it once was. Jeff?
Noel, you have a question?
I just think it's an excellent report and very positive. I celebrate your work.
Thank you, Noel.
Other questions, comments?
So if you didn't get enough of this tonight, you can come on October 30th to the Chamber of Commerce luncheon. And, uh, it's at noon usually, right? Is it noon? 11:30. All right, you don't want to miss because then you'll miss the salad, Noel. So we want to make sure you're there in time for the salad. It's at the Northfield Golf Club.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Dr. Hillman.
Thank you all.
Okay. So, um, that concludes our discussion and report. So we can actually now move on to the approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were just a few items, personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Jeff. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, so we will move on to items for individual action. Um, as Dr. Hillman alluded, uh, we are, um, approving the superintendent goals for 2019, 2020. So is there a motion to approve the superintendent's 2019, 2020 goals as presented? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Noel. Any discussion, questions or comments?
Just thank you, Dr. Hillman, for this. Um, I think that the, the, the previous presentation, um, really gave us the sense for the depth and breadth of the work that you do, and I think the, the four focused, um, goals are, are excellent, and we know that, um, your work is not limited to those, but, um, just really highlighting some focus areas. So we appreciate that. Um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we are at items for information. We have construction update number 13. Dr. Hillman?
Well, if you have not been over to the Greenbelt Park campus lately, the construction fence is up and things are rolling. I was, I'm not sure they got to it today, but by understanding, they were going to start bulldozing today, um, inside the fence. So we continue to move along. What you'll see, we included in this week's, or this meeting's report is that we did have a meeting last week with world architects at Sibley Elementary about what they call the 3D views and the other materials kind of palette use, so thinking about the kinds of carpet, the other kinds of flooring, uh, the, um, uh, other treatments and those kinds of things. It's really an exciting meeting. Orville McGurwitz was part of that meeting. Several of you participate in other similar meetings. So that's a very exciting, things are getting really, they're getting really real there, right? So again, if you know, we've talked, you know, that the bids for Sibley will be due, we're anticipating that we do on October 15th, and you'll see in the upcoming meetings that there is a scheduled special board meeting for October 21st to accept those bids. So we continue down that path with Sibley. Um, again, we've had the initial Greenbelt Park renovation discussion with the architects and the community services. Uh, Director Bailey pointed out some of those items tonight. And again, that's a part where that core planning group will actually be getting started in the next week or so here. So, uh, very exciting there. And then you'll hear about this in a minute too, but we've got a groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow night, and of all the days this week, this looks like might be the only one that doesn't rain. So it is a ceremonial groundbreaking, and, and we're very excited about that. We're asking any student that wants to participate, they can come, and we've got some hard hats that they're going to be able to wear and flip a ceremonial piece of dirt. We're going to let the kids go first, and then we, as the adults, get to go second because this is a child-centered school. So after that, the board members, anyone who wants to flip a ceremonial shovel full of sand, and all the people who work so hard on the referendum that we, you know, cannot thank people enough for that, we'll allow those folks to do it afterwards. So, uh, pretty simple ceremony, but the focus is on kids and making sure that they're excited about their upcoming new school. Um, and so I think that those are the real new things that we have seen since the last meeting.
Any questions on construction update? Tom?
Sorry, I missed it.
Oh, no, no one's.
Sorry, I missed it, Joel. So one weather report I heard said possibly thunderstorms tomorrow night, if there are, um, would, uh, would it still go on or would things be changed or what do you?
Well, we've got a tent. We actually have a tent that's up so that if it is raining, you know, that we can have people under a tent, which is a good piece. I'm going to look at mine directly right now because, uh, what I'm seeing right now from my dark sky app, which, you know, has been pretty good, is that tomorrow at 6:00 PM, there is 0% chance of precipitation. I have also learned you don't trust any weather report that is more than two hours in advance. So this is some extensive knowledge.
Excellent.
And then another question, and I don't know if it's been, if I asked it, it's been answered. Are there electric vehicle outlets in the new Greenbelt Park lot?
I can do you one better. Uh, as of next summer, I believe it's next summer, there will be electric plug-in slots at every building. And so what our plan is, I'm not sure if it will all be next summer or if it's being phased in. Uh, we are actually motivated by the local Rotary Club's, uh, grant process, and I spoke with Jim Cullsa, our director of buildings and grounds, and we have an advantage because we have a master electrician on our, uh, staff. We don't have to pay the high cost of installation. So we have a plan over the next, I don't think it's going to be all next year, but over the next couple of years, where every building will get one charging station. The high school will get two, is the plan. Each charging station has two plugins. And so our goal is over the next couple of years to offer those pieces in each building because we can buy the equipment at our normal school district rate and then install it ourselves. So my sense is those will go in with the new parking lot at the new building and then continue to make sure that they're phased in like we've done with a lot of other things over the years. Excellent.
Excellent question. Excellent question. Okay. So with that rundown of future meetings, Monday, September 23rd, and Monday, October 14th, as well as Monday, October 28th, all regular school board meetings. And as Dr. Hillman mentioned, I appreciate the willingness of board members to meet on Monday, October 21st at 5:00 PM. We will be approving the Sibley bids in order for them to continue on the schedule, which is groundbreaking in November. So I appreciate board members being willing to do that. That extra week is really substantial in terms of being able to get on it that much quicker to keep construction on schedule. So I appreciate board members' flexibility. And I just want to, before we ask for a motion to adjourn, welcome back district youth council members for being here tonight. It's always great to look out and see that you're willing to be here, and we appreciate your willingness to take your evening to be here as part of our school board meeting. So welcome back to another school year. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.